All right, let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion from Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Got a second from Councilmember Mock. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, any residents' comments and questions for items that are not on tonight's agenda? Doesn't look like it. Moving on to the City Hall construction update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as you know, we've been working on the City Hall project and as a kind of a construction update, not just for the council but for the residents watching, we've invited representatives from Kraus Anderson and Wold Architects and Engineers to appear before the council and present you with an update and answer any questions that you might have. So I think we have Dave Schultz, Brianna Cescatello, Bill Burey, and Andy Dalquist as our construction groups. If you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves to the council and give a little update.
My name is Dave Schultz and I'm with Kraus Anderson. And I'm the project manager for the project here. So writing the contracts and then the day-to-day activities on the financial side and the office side basically for the project.
I'm Bill Burey. I'm project superintendent with Kraus Anderson. And I manage the day-to-day construction on the job site.
I'm Brianna Cescatello from Wold Architects and Engineers. I'm one of the architectural staff and designers on the project.
And Andy Dalquist with Wold Architects, project manager. Construction and the design throughout the project.
So the handout that you've got has got kind of a construction recap of what's gone on to date as far as demolition of the old City Hall, all the site preparations, soil corrections, everything site-related basically to get ready for the project. And then foundation concrete in place. We've got the concrete masonry units in place for the stair tower and the elevator tower. And then structural steel is complete out there. We're currently installing the exterior steel studs. And then the sheathing is going around. Some of the upcoming activities for the exterior enclosure. We will be putting the waterproofing on. And then the brick should start here in the next probably week and a half. We'll have the rest of the scaffolding up with the plastic on, the poly. And we'll have heat to that area so we can start putting the brick on. And we'll start on the backside, the levee side. And then we'll work our way around towards the south. And then we'll do the front elevation along Broadway. And then we'll finish on the north with the brick. And in addition, we'll have the, with the stud framing going on, we'll be building the parapet walls, which will be what the roofing will tie to. So the roofing will be starting probably in the next three weeks. We'll have them out there. With the completion of the sheathing, we'll have heat going on in the building. And then we'll begin our underground utility roughens. We've got electrical roughens to do. We do have the plumbing roughens in place currently. And then some of the site activities yet to happen would be grading and the sidewalks, curb and gutter, patching the street. Come in the spring, we'll be doing some of that. We do have a three-week look-ahead schedule that we review with Brent and Mark on a weekly basis. And then per the note there, we meet every month or so to review the financials. And we just met at the end of January. And right now, we're tracking well and project's on budget. We still have contingency left for anything that comes up that might be unknown. And we're entering a phase right now where things will start to really pick up. And we'll have multiple contractors out there working on the interior and the exterior at the same time. Questions? You want to scroll through some of the photos? Some of the photos from the start. There's the demo. That's the foundation work going on there. Concrete pumped in the walls going up. And here the...
Go back one, please. Why don't you just go back one, please? Are there going to be any issues with the crick with the way it's all backfilled and everything right now?
No, we don't foresee any.
Okay.
I know that the design team has looked at that from the start as far as proximity and they've been comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you.
Still in progress. And then you can't really see it very well, but along the, what would be the second floor, we've got precast hollow core plank. That's a common flooring that Wold designs in buildings like this. And then this one is one of the more up-to-date ones where we've got the sheathing going on in the building. And then we've got some waterproofing wrap to do around the windows. And then we've got a waterproofing product that actually sprays on to encapsulate the walls.
Windows are going in when?
The waterproofing should be happening on, we'll start on the backside probably in the next week and a half, something like that. We do want to get the enclosure up. So we've got some more scaffolding to do on that backside and then some poly in order to get some heat back there. We'd need to have temps above 20 degrees to get the waterproofing on.
Okay.
For the manufacturer, so.
It was nice to see the cold weather that nobody was there. And it was nice to see people were there Saturday working.
Yeah, we've been trying to make every opportunity to be there when we can. They do, contractors do have criteria.
Yes, they do. And it's very understandable. You said you had any contingencies all covered so far?
Yes, yeah, we're in good shape there.
Okay, and scheduling, we're looking at the end of May is what I see here?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're shooting at. Things should pick up pretty quickly now that we've got exposure about to happen and we'll have heat going inside the building shortly here.
Perfect. Yeah, that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions? Right, thank you. Thank you. All right. No public hearings. We're on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Sayer.
I'll second that.
A second from Councilmember McKnight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing for unfinished business? Moving on to new business, the 2019 Street Improvement Project. Mr. Lannis.
Well, good evening. Hopefully, this is going to be a short one on my end here. So I'm just here to talk to you about the 2019 Improvement Project and where we are in the process and some next steps for you to consider. Of course, we've just got a slide you've seen many times here just about the project. It's roadway facilities, pedestrian facilities, infrastructure, sewer and water. For those who haven't seen this, it's broken up into the four groups. Dietrich Drive and Kirchi Hill, Elm Drive and the Street Alley, Casey's to Broadway, Sunny Ridge Drive and Lylewood, Spring Creek Drive Trail. So all things you've seen before. And the big item is, is where are we in the process? A lot's been done on the project to date. You can see what's been completed. We've had studies approved, authorized, final plans and specifications, held the public hearing, of course. Many comments came from that, in which case a work plan was developed to try and address comments and look at them in detail for best ways to respond, of course. And then we've, a staff work plan was presented in a work session in an effort to inform on how we're responding to those comments. And then, of course, from that point, another resident notice has been mailed and an open house was held on January 31st. So a lot of steps in this process have occurred to bring us to this point here. We are now at the point of receiving plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement to bid the project. So that's really what's in front of you tonight. There's only a few major next steps here, of course, bidding the project and constructing. So we're getting close to the end. So this is a big one. What I'm going to talk to you a little bit about is the work plan, of course, just as a refresher and what we heard at the open house. So this doesn't come out formatted very well. It looks better in my presentation than what's up on the screen. But we've talked a lot about the resident costs, of course. It was confirmed that the assessment amount could be reduced. And that is, of course, what we're proceeding with at this point for assumed assessments. So that was a big element that was discussed. Street widths, we confirmed a number of street widths and ended up modifying Elm Drive to 26 feet. Sidewalks, we talked a lot about sidewalks and ended up with a set of plans with a three-foot boulevard and a five-foot sidewalk for various reasons. Discussed and evaluated in prior work sessions here. And then, of course, we've got some traffic calming at the street alley for truck traffic. So those are all things that have been reviewed as a response to comments at the public hearing. And the residents have been informed through a mailing. And the open house on January 31st was, as far as we're concerned, favorable in terms of the comments received were geared more towards the direct responses to construction activities, the tree removals. There's some certain comments on curb locations and such. I've outlined them in the memo and I think I'd probably defer to questions from the council if you had any on what was presented. But that was somewhat of a narrative of what we heard at the open house. So it was a little different feeling at the last one. So that is why I feel we're at the point here where the council can consider receiving the plans and specs as, you know, you don't have the full documents attached, but you've got the title sheet and the cover sheet of the information that contains a lot of details on all the things that we've been talking about so far on this project. So at this point, I would turn it over to some, you know, questions that you might have. But otherwise, our recommendation would be to receive the plans and authorize ad for bid.
Great. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to public comments. If anybody has any comments, questions, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Michael M. Keys, 703 Kirchi Hill Drive. So my house will be impacted by the sidewalks right in front. Could you explain the three-foot boulevard, five-foot sidewalk? Does that leave space between the curb and the sidewalk for like grass? Or are we going to go directly to the sidewalk to the curb?
Yeah, it leaves a minimum boulevard. Three feet of grass between the walk and the curb. The three feet is considered somewhat of a minimum. As certainly a larger boulevard is desired. Four or five feet is often typical, but three feet is considered the minimum standard sufficient for signage and turf and basically snow removal.
Did we consider moving it directly to the curb to reduce the encroachment on people's properties? I know my father's on the city council for Jordan and they moved to do that for snow removal, easier snow removal, encroach less on people's properties. And that grass is really difficult to maintain with salt and stuff.
Sure. As you know, this has been talked about a great deal, the question being the boulevard. And they're pulling up the PowerPoint that was shown at the work session. Yeah, I mean, our recommendation is maintained as the need for a boulevard is based on a place for the snow to be stockpiled. And, you know, certainly for signage and three foot's kind of a minimum for turf establishment. So, and plus a sidewalk on the back of curb here. You get into some challenges with doors opening into the actual walking route and such. So the rationale for the boulevard is maintained with setbacks being reviewed in the prior work session. And we found that the setbacks were sufficient to support this eight-foot section, so.
The total setbacks will still be 11 feet. I haven't been to something since the original open, or public comment.
Sure. Sure, do I have control? Okay. All right, well, I'm going to address the council as far as the refresher on this, as far as what's been reviewed before. So this goes back to some of the things that we talked about on this topic because yes, that topic was brought up as far as whether or not we'd want to bring up the sidewalk right up against the back of curb. This is a picture of, well, this is a picture of this standard boulevard. This is more of your ideal snow storage scenario. This is going to be more than your three foot. This is going to be kind of a minimal example here where, you know, there certainly isn't sufficient area for snow. And that's minimal for signage. You can see the signage actually overhangs on that boulevard.
How wide is that one?
That one, that one, I didn't measure that, but that's not even three feet.
I was going to say, that doesn't even look like three feet.
So you're referring to the setbacks? So here's what was looked at here. From other neighborhoods in the area, Third Street, you've got an average setback of what? 26 feet or at least this, this is one that was measured. Another neighborhood here, the setback from the distance to the face of the home was 25 feet. On Kirchi Hill, the existing portion of the development is 29 feet from the back of walk to the face of the house. Now, this is the development in question that's currently being designed here. You have a setback from the sidewalk to the face of the house of 35 feet, 34 feet, and 35 feet along that stretch. That's, you know, five to 10 feet greater than what's typical in some of the other developments in this area in the city. So it was really found that the idea that the sidewalk was encroaching so close to the house, it was unnatural, was somewhat discounted that this is more of an average, more of a norm. In fact, it's well above the norm. And so we looked at it as more, is the sidewalk section of the three-foot boulevard and five-foot walk, is that really appropriate to continue as a standard? It was certainly not setbacks that were driving the issue as to whether or not this was reasonable. It was, comes down to just the basic premise of is the standard appropriate to adhere to? And we found that it was. So that is, that's the background to it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Anybody?
Hi, Kaylee Swanson. I'm at 707 Kirchi Hill Drive. Same thing as Michael, so I don't know if it really has any relevance. But I guess driving around today, Sixth Street, from what I could tell, as well as the downtown, you know, they don't look like they have a curb. Do you guys know?
What about Sixth Street?
Sixth Street, as well as downtown and Fourth Street, they all have kind of the sidewalk right on the street.
That's true. And Sixth, Main Street has that also.
Today, so I'm not sure.
There's a number of places in Carver that have the sidewalk right up to the curb. I know because I lived on one of them for five years, so.
How was your snow?
How was my snow? It's snow. Either you pile it in the boulevard or you push it and pile it in the yard. Either you pile it in this spot or you pile it in that spot.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I didn't have any problems with it. Yeah, you get a little extra from the snowplow, but it's Minnesota. We get snow and you move it, and that's how it works. So I personally, from my experience, didn't have any issues with having it right up to the curb line.
I think our only concern with the three feet is again, the grass is kind of hard to grow with three feet, we've heard. But we don't want the five feet, so if that's the only option. On this strip that goes down Dietrich, how far is their setback?
How far, excuse me? How far is?
Did you decide to put it on, is that white line the sidewalk?
Yes, that's the side that it's on, the west side.
She was wondering what the boulevard was there too.
The same.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
What's the setback from the house, from the back of curb to the house? Because you've got it measured 34, 35 here, but it's not measured on that one.
Okay, I would have to, I would have to do a measurement on that one. I did not do that one.
Was that the question you were?
Yeah, I was just curious. There's looks smaller, but it's not my house, so I don't.
And is it just the setback in the front of the house? Because I believe that's the side of the house.
It's both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it applies. Which is a corner lot applies to both.
Yeah, and these aren't minimum setbacks. These were just kind of average distances per se. There's really no minimum violation that I think we're even coming close to here. This is more just about what's normal.
Thank you.
As opposed to minimum required or anything, so.
No, 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 go ahead.
Oh, I just had one more question. I missed the notice on the open house in my mail for some reason. So it's probably already been gone over. But the street, for our street, it's going to be the same as what was projected in the beginning?
For width?
For the width, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 32. You're up here at 32 feet, yes.
Yeah, so that's what all of Kirchi Hill is? Is that what we?
Yes, it matches existing.
Okay.
It matches the existing street to them.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So, are you good? Yeah. Okay, thanks, Kaylee.
Kaylee, the Sixth Street sidewalk that you're referring to, that street, I'm old, that street, there was a huge ditch with a crick line that went up. And so the reason for where that sidewalk was put was for the drainage of the ditch all the way up. That's why they put the sidewalk where they did. Okay, does that help?
Hello. Anna Dingler, 417 Dietrich Drive. So like we talked about.
One more time? What was that?
417 Dietrich, Anna Dingler.
Okay.
I will go on record that we like the sidewalks. But I've heard a lot of talk at the last council meeting, I was watching online, about the boulevard width. And just one thing to mention, at the December public hearing, we talked about matching what's in the current stretch of Kirchi Hill, which has a boulevard. And I think it would be strange if we went and the end of it, and your yard has a boulevard, and then all of a sudden we jump to the side. So if we want to stick with that continuity theme that was brought up in the past, keeping that boulevard makes sense, so. That's all, we like the sidewalks.
On Dietrich, are you?
We're the corner, like in the very back where it turns at the curb.
Thank you.
When you mean the back corner, is that where the? And that runs down to Sixth Street, correct?
I'm sorry.
Okay, now I know. Here's a question for Larry Brenton, Dan. Reducing the burden from 25 to 19? 19, two?
Correct.
Does that change the bonding or affect the bonding or anything like that that we will be doing? It meets the criteria?
It does.
It does.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Well, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 108-19, approving plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2019 Infrastructure Improvement Project.
We have a motion from Councilmember Henry.
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember McKnight. Any discussion? Yeah, I have a few things. Go ahead.
In looking at the overall plan, I want to say, one, thank you to staff for working so diligently to work on the cost and the fees. I was really happy to see that we were able to find some savings there to bring this cost down to the homeowners. 90% of this plan, I think, is absolutely fantastic. I think that the streets up there definitely need to be redone. They are in some desperate need of repair. I think most of the council and anyone who's been watching knows that I have a problem with the proposed sidewalk. I think that.
Which one?
The proposed sidewalk up on Kirchi. I don't, well, one, I've heard the residents. I've heard the residents who it directly affects and they are not in favor of it. I also have some misgivings about the fact that we're creating another sidewalk that leads to an uncontrolled intersection. I prefer to see a different plan come out with connectivity for the city that might address the issues of having uncontrolled intersections. We have one that comes out into High Street, not far from where we'll now have one. And then we also have, at the top of Fourth Street, we have a trail crossing there, excuse me, which a previous council decided to remove the stop signs that used to be there. There was a stop sign at that point of crossing, wasn't there? Right above the church in Elm on Fourth Street?
Yes, there was.
So now we have, we have a, it is marked, but it is, there's not a stop sign there. So we have people who are crossing there. We'll have people crossing down farther, and then we're going to have people crossing down farther, all technically in uncontrolled intersections. There are no stop signs to stop traffic as people are crossing the road. So I, again, I am 90% in favor of this project. I think the street reconstruction in generality over the entire span of the project is great. The funding, the pricing that we've worked on has been a great help to the residents when it comes to the cost of those assessments. I still am not in favor of the sidewalks from the reasons that I have just stated. I think that if we were to even talk about putting them directly onto the road, I could, I would love to entertain a conversation about that. Otherwise, I'm not in favor of the sidewalks as proposed tonight.
My comments, I think the sidewalks are necessary. We, in our comprehensive plan, for as long as I have been associated with the city, with you on the Parks Commission, on the Planning Commission, we've talked about connectivity. And the sidewalk is going to be proving to be a connector between essentially Sixth Street and Fourth Street. There is currently a sidewalk that runs the length of what happens to be my property that is a sidewalk to nowhere. I know you talked about a trail to nowhere. So for me, it makes sense to do that. I agree with Anna's comments about the continuity and wanting to have everything else have that look of being the same of everything in that city. That said, I have kind of done a little informal poll of some of the folks who are sitting here tonight. And it seems like the desire is to have those sidewalks close right up to the street. So I would be in favor of that. That said, we still need to have the sidewalks. I have my own concerns. I know that the snow removal, you know, I worry about snow removal. I just want to tell you, I know Mike and Kaylee, you guys both mentioned that it's hard to maintain the grass. Let me dispel that rumor. Let me dispel that rumor. That's not a, we've never had any issues growing grass in that area in our boulevard. So that's not, not an issue. I also commend city staff for taking a really hard look at these numbers and bringing it down. I was at the open house on Thursday night, and some of the feedback that we got that the residents were really, really thankful and happy that the numbers had gone down, that fifty-eight hundred dollars. So this is still a large number, but I appreciate the time that Brent, you, and everyone else spent looking into these numbers and crunching them and trying to bring them down and seeing that there was no stone left unturned when we took a look at this assessment, so I'm really appreciative of that.
Any other comments?
I have some comments. Thank you for the staff echoing what's been said earlier by Councilmember Mock and Mayor Johnson on getting a lower assessment for those residents. I am also in favor of what Mayor Johnson said regarding having that area not have a boulevard, rather do the concrete, the sidewalk right to the curb, just based on the resident feedback. And I believe this project really gets us starting on the connectivity and continuity. There's more to be done, but for this project, I think it's a great start. Yes, I agree with Councilmember Mock in that it would be nice to have, you know, more of the sidewalks connecting what was discussed two weeks ago in a previous meeting from Community Park, connecting down to High, at least High Street, High Street. But I think that's for a different project. So I echo what Mayor Johnson said regarding eliminating that boulevard in that Kirchhill Drive area. But otherwise, I think we're making great progress, and I support it.
I concur. I mean, I think this is a great improvement project. I appreciate everything staff has done to listen to residents, make accommodations, help educate and explain why we're planning this project the way that we are, and also working the numbers to make it a little bit more viable for everybody. But I think it is a great improvement project. I agree with all the comments about connectivity. But I also really concur with Councilmember Mock that we got to address some of the gaps and issues that we have in our trail system in general. And I would like to continue to advocate that we look at some of those walkability studies and some of those things and address those issues in the future. Absolutely.
Okay, so we have. Good?
We're good.
So, Mayor and Council, so the.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Councilmembers Henry was to approve, or his motion, and it was seconded by Councilmember McKnight, was approve the plans and specs as presented. So, I don't know the protocol of Robert's rules as it relates to amend, but if, as it stands, you'd have to vote on that motion, up or down, and then you could consider another motion if that failed. Am I correct?
You are correct. You could also vote to, at this point, somebody could make a motion to amend the current motion on the table to, if I'm following the discussion of the council correctly, to move the sidewalk on a certain portion of Kirchi to be adjacent to the street. And if that was seconded, then the first thing, order of business, would be a vote on that amendment. Then the next order, and assuming that that motion passes, then the next order of business would be a vote on the main motion as amended.
So, to be clear.
What's that?
So, to be clear. We have plans and specs currently, correct? We are bidding, we are on the current plans and specs. Could we bid the sidewalk at the street? Put that in the plans and specs as in an option?
Councilmember Henry, Council, that alternates are typically put out there for a cost. This is a design piece, whether either you want it or you don't. So I suggest the council vote, Councilmember Henry's motion, up or down? And then if it fails, then another motion be made to adopt the project with any amendments that you choose. I think that'd be the cleanest way to do this.
Let's keep it clean.
Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the plans as is with the boulevard between the sidewalk and the street. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
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 We'll do a roll call. Councilmember Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Mock.
Nay.
Mayor Johnson.
Nay.
Councilmember Sayer.
Nay.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, I'll entertain another motion or make it myself. So I will move to motion to adopt Resolution one oh eight dash nineteen approving plans and specifications, which includes a sidewalk adjacent to the curb and advertisement for bids for the twenty nineteen infrastructure improvements project. Is that what you need?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by myself, Mayor Johnson, and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
And we'll do another roll call. Councilmember Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye.
Councilmember McKnight.
Nay.
Thank you.
Right, the motion passes. Moving on to item nine point two, plans and specifications for Commerce Drive.
Well, take two, I think you know what's coming on this one here. This is a pretty similar discussion here. This is a request, approve plans and specifications for Commerce Drive and the associated infrastructure improvements here. So I'll give you a little bit of background on that one here. Of course, you've seen this before, but it's a new roadway and utility infrastructure. That'd be serving the site. The intended project extends sanitary sewer and water main, and then completes a roadway connection that ultimately would be the access and service to Lakeview Industries. What's been done to date here is, I've gone through the many steps, what would ultimately be similar to the four twenty-nine process. There's certain TIF and deed, deed funds involved with the project, so that's the general procedures that are being followed. Of course, approved the feasibility study, authorized the plans and specs. And ultimately, what we're here tonight to talk about is receiving the plans and specs and authorizing advertisements for bid. So the plan would be to move into the bidding process and award process with the construction as early as possible to stay in line with the Lakeview Industries' schedule. So that is the current action at the table here, and I guess we would be open to any questions or comments you may have on the project.
We're all good, any questions?
Nope.
Glenn?
Thinking.
Okay, okay. He's thinking. Please hold.
Uh, no.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution nine dash nineteen approving plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids for Commerce Drive.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Mock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, item number nine point three, the Southwest Prime Service Agreement. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Southwest Transit operates what's called the Prime Service, which is an on-demand ride service model, which primarily provides transportation to Eden Prairie, Chanhassen, Chaska, and Victoria. And for the last two years, in Carver, in twenty seventeen and eighteen, it's a ride service that uses ADA compliant vehicles and typically provides kind of that first mile, last mile of transit service. The city had been receiving the Prime Service as a kind of a promotional piece from Southwest Transit in relationship to the city's current operations grant, which runs bus transit out of Carver Station. The city hadn't been charged for that service, and in twenty eighteen, Prime provided approximately two thousand rides in the city, in and out of the city of Carver. Late in twenty eighteen, Southwest did notify the city that it would cost approximately fifteen thousand dollars to continue that service. Based on the time of year and where we're at with the budget process, the city did not choose to continue that, rather chose to initiate a conversation with the city council on the future of funding that service. At the January twenty-second City Council Work Session, the Prime Service Model was reviewed with the council along with a description of the grant opportunity or the grant service model at Carver Station. Prime is not an eligible expense under that grant model or grant. It's just for that bus service to downtown Minneapolis and the University of Minnesota. Based on feedback from the council, staff along with the city attorney worked on a draft services agreement for Prime. Under the terms of the agreement, Prime would start again on March first. As part of the agreement, which is a subtle change from the work session, the city would only be charged for rides originating out of Carver and not for rides ending in Carver. So that changed a little bit of the cost. The city, so it operates not as a kind of a flat fee, you get Prime for the year, but it's based on the users. And so kind of our estimate based on users from years past and their new kind of model for charging is, we're expecting about twelve thousand dollars of costs in twenty nineteen. Prime has really developed as a transportation piece throughout the area, and so they've seen growth rates in, you know, forty percent, fifty percent in communities. We're planning on a twenty percent, and so we've scheduled that out through twenty twenty-three. And part of that piece is understanding kind of the impact that it has to the community and future conversations with it. So the city really hasn't marketed with Prime, marketed Prime as it's been kind of a promotional piece. But even with that service ending, there was a number of folks that reached out saying that they would like to see that service continue. I think emails were sent to the council. My point, excuse me, my point in saying this is that based on the, based on the growth and how this Prime Service is evolving, I think it'd be exceedingly difficult for the council to take away that service in five years. So my point in putting out those numbers, not as a pro or a con to the service, but just anticipating that this is more than just probably a one-year commitment. It's a long-term commitment for the community to provide this type of transportation. And so we have the sample or proposed agreement in your packet. Essentially, the council has kind of three choices tonight. You can choose to adopt the agreement, go to the Southwest Transit Board, they'd adopt it, and we'd be able to start in March first. The council could choose to take no action, which would essentially then, you know, not provide the service. Or if you need additional information or you'd like some additional research done, we can certainly do that and bring it back to a future meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Shall we open this up for public comments before we? Does anybody have any comments, questions? Shelley, if you can just state your name and your address, please.
I'm Shelley Rudolph. I'm at one twenty-one Fourth Street East. And thank you, first of all, for putting this on your agenda tonight. I know that you have a lot on your plate with everything going on, but I have a few things written down because I wanted to come prepared. As you know, some of you, we do have a family here in Carver that has, that uses Southwest Prime to transport their physically handicapped daughter to Eden Prairie, to Chaska, Chanhassen, and so forth, because it has the handicap accessible van. And without that, without Southwest Prime, she has been sitting in her home, unable to leave because she doesn't, they don't have access to a handicap accessible van of their own. In addition to that family, there are people that use it to commute to work. There are, there's a, sorry, lost my place here.
You're fine.
We have a senior housing development that's being built on Sixth Street. We have subsidized housing in multiple areas around town. And there are people that simply cannot afford their own vehicles. Southwest Prime is a service greatly needed here in Carver, and that need is only going to increase as our population grows. I hope you choose to continue Prime Services for those who commute, for those unable to afford their own vehicle, for the senior citizens who already live in Carver, as well as those who'll be living in the new senior housing development, and for people like Ashley who need that handicap accessible buses that Prime offers just to leave their home and access human interaction. So, thank you for communicating with me about this and with others in the community, and look forward to your conversations.
Question, Shelley? So, WeCab offers services, have they been able to utilize that for any of the gaps? I don't know that.
They don't have handicap accessible.
Okay, so it's a wheelchair, is it wheelchair bound that they have to?
Yes, she's a paraplegic.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Reed Welch, eighteen thirteen Red Oak Ridge. I guess I would voice my support for this proposal. I feel as a member of the Carver community that we should be able to support the people who, again, can't afford a car or don't have as many options as many of us do. So I would support this measure.
Thanks, Reed.
Any other comments? All right.
I do.
Councilmember Henry.
Um, looking at the financials, Brent. I know we discussed fifteen thousand, is a twelve thousand for this year prorated, our prorated rate?
No, it's not a prorated rate, so it's based on users. So it's, if we are in a position where it's not used very much, you know, considerably, you'll have more money in the coffer, so to speak. If it's used to a great amount, you might go through that twelve thousand dollars by October first.
Okay, then what?
Then I'd come back to you and say, do you want to take more from the special capital fund to fund this? But, you know, there'll be cases where you go over or way under based on use. And so part of this is a little bit of a, I guess, with, you know, a blindfold on because we haven't marketed this, and so we could be just at the tip of the iceberg as far as the demand. Because it is, it's, you know, it's basically a different version of Uber in that it's an on-demand model, and they pick you up with the bus, and it has the amenities that Mrs. Rudolph discussed as far as being able to provide a service to people that need accessible resources, so. But I said, to really specifically, essentially, the city is subsidizing ten dollars per ride originating out of Carver. And so if you had ten rides in a week, you'd take a hundred dollars off of that twelve thousand dollars.
This is just for outbound rides, correct?
Rides originating out of the city.
Okay. How would they get back?
Well, they get back using the same service model, except that city then is charged for that ride going, originating out of that community.
Okay, so if, if she, what's her name?
Ashley.
Ashley. If Ashley gets her out of Carver, goes to Chaska, then Chaska will, they'll get billed for her coming back to Carver. Is that what I'm understanding?
You're partly, I don't know the financial arrangement between Chaska as they're in Southwest's organization.
Correct, but we won't be responsible for the ten dollars coming back.
The city won't be charged for the ride from Chaska to Carver.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that having Southwest Prime is really important for our community, and I think it's a service that is necessary and needed, and it's. think it's a service that is necessary and needed and it's not the first time that I have heard that. I do get a little bit nervous when we have a certain amount, a dollar amount, and then all of a sudden we hit it and, you know, now that we've been talking more about it, it may become even more popular. And I do get a little fearful at the, we'll just use October 1st as our, as our point. Then October 1st comes and then we have to say, well, either we cut it off or we add more dollars to it. So I'm, I really want to hear the rest of the council's discussion on this part too because it's, like I said, I get a little bit nervous about that. I do have one question, Brent. When you said that we would roll it over in the coffer, or we have it in the coffers, does that mean that if we only came in, let's say at $10,000, that when we were budgeted for 12, would we have that $2,000, would we kind of have like a special fund for this? Or when you say it's in the coffer still, would we roll things over or not?
No, I mean generally, if there's a surplus of funds in a, in any given year budget, the city has adopted policy that anything that's over 50% of the general reserve budget, so the, if you think about the city's budget as if, let's say it was $100, anything, if we have $52 left over in the budget, that $2, that 2%, would go into the special revenue fund.
Okay.
So we're required, or the state auditor strongly suggests that you keep 40% of your operating revenues in reserve. The city has a policy that says anything that exceeds 50% is put over into the special capital. So when I meet, when I, when I reference the, kind of the savings account or coffers, I, I was referencing, if you hit 12,000 by October 1st, the council will then have to direct staff to go back to the special capital fund to, at least for this year one, to go and draw. Let's say you, you know, you hit it October 1st, we'd say, well, do you want us to tell Southwest we don't have any more funds or do you want us to go back to the special capital? In the following years, let's say that that happened in 2020 and we budgeted 14,400, you know, you'd be in a situation like you would be in probably any number of cases with the budget where all of a sudden you spent more money than you were anticipating and you can either choose to change your service model. So if we exceeded costs in postage, we'd have to say, well, that's just the cost of doing business and we're going to go over in that. Or you, you know, say, well, we're going to do more emails. And so we'd have to have a continuous conversation and frankly, we'd, you know, we'd work with Southwest and really try to monitor this because we wouldn't want to put ourselves in a position where it was September 15th and we're like, oh, we're going to run out of money in 15 days. We really want to track out and say, okay, after one month, you know, it looks like we're going to be short, you know? And so, you know, I think your comments are well-stated, Councilmember Mock, in that, you know, part of this financial piece is a little bit unknown and that's a, can be a little bit concerning because we really don't know what this is going to end up being. We know that it provides a great service, but we don't know what the, the financial costs are going to be with any degree of great certainty.
Okay, and then my final question. When is the assisted living going to have residents? What year, what month can we expect that to happen? Oh, Aaron's grabbing.
Spring of 2020?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that was.
Councilmember Mock, we're anticipating spring 2020.
Spring 2020.
I'll also add that Carver Ridge is projected to have their own bus.
They are?
Yes, that's part of their service plan.
Okay, thank you.
My comment is that, well, two things, I do see a need for this. And I did have a similar question about the senior housing and I understand that there's a shuttle there, but I think this also could be a service for the potential employees that will staff that facility. So I could see an increase there for ridership.
Southwest Prime seems to keep really good records, don't they? From what they brought to us, they'll be able to.
Yeah, so what, if I may, so what impressed me about the contract included in our packets was the detailed reporting that we'll receive on a monthly basis and detailed number of riders, many repeat riders. You know, when we met with Southwest previously, I felt like I needed more data and wanted to get more data and it was just why, you know, I asked Brent to tell me about the residents who were missing this service and I was really glad to hear from Shelley. And I think, and Brent forwarded me another email, that was good data. That makes me feel good about putting this in a budget because I feel like we do need to be committed to it, but I also want to monitor it and make sure we're budgeting for it and we understand what the costs are, right? Especially over time, are they growing as we're anticipating or not or whatever, so that we can make the appropriate adjustments. So I like the reporting commitment in the contract. That makes me feel better that we'll be able to monitor it going forward.
Go ahead.
Something new?
I'm ending up not being able to get more in, so it's backfiring.
When I saw that there was 2,000 rides in and out of Carver, I was kind of choking at the numbers. But then when it was explained that it was about 50% in, 50% out and we're looking at the 50% going out of town, that was much more palatable. But I do believe that Southwest will give us really, really good numbers because they want to track this as much as we do. So, yes, it's kind of an unknown, but it's a service that I believe is needed and wanted in town, so.
Agreed. So just to kind of, my thoughts, I agree that this is a service that's needed in town. You know, I think when it comes down to it, we're talking transportation, but this is a housing issue. If we are committed to having housing for all in Carver, we need to be able to have that same commitment to the services to accommodate the folks who are participating in all the different various levels of housing that we have in Carver. You know, I have a friend that I know who had a medical issue and doesn't necessarily qualify for other services, but he wasn't able to drive for a number of months. So, you know, we're all just kind of something like that away from needing a service like this. I really appreciate Brent looking at the numbers and the long-term kind of outlook and projections for the budget numbers for this because I think it's important that we all realize and kind of like what Brent said, is that we need to be committed to this for the long haul because it was, there were some folks who were impacted deeply when this, when this program stopped at the first of the year. If we do it again or if we get a reputation that this is going to be something that has fits and starts, then that's not good either. So as long as we realize that a vote to continue this service tonight is part, it's just a drop in the bucket, it's a longer-term commitment, as long as we all share that same, maybe not share, but recognize that commitment, we're good. I have also received some emails. Eric Gentry is a Carver resident, he works in housing at CAP Agency and some of their social workers have folks who live in Carver crossings who were affected by this. An email about somebody who now walks two miles into Chaska every day for work. So this definitely has well, has affected a fair amount of people. A few things, and I think we had a really good presentation from Southwest Transit two weeks ago and I think that this will be something that's good about taping those work sessions going forward because they gave us a broader picture of the whole agreement with Southwest Transit. But Aaron, can you remind me, when do we anticipate the grant funds will run out for the, the current service to the UO in downtown?
So the agreement that we have extends through the end of 2019, but based on funds, I think we'll be able to extend beyond that. I can't say exactly what it'll be, but I anticipate beyond 2019.
Okay, so just the other thing that I want to keep at the forefront of our minds while we're talking budget numbers is that we have, you know, these numbers, 12,000 in 2019, 14.4 in 2020, 17.3 in 2021, you know, keep that in mind, but there's also the roughly 200,000, Aaron, that of the grant that's our responsibility as well. So just as long as we're all going into this on the same page and with our eyes open. I also want to make sure, I think this came as a little bit of a surprise and it felt really late that we were notified of this when it went away as of the first of the year. I just want to make sure that we continue to have really good communication with Southwest Transit when we're dealing with potentially running out of money in October 1st as we've just kind of floated out there. I don't want to hear about that on September 20th. So as long as we can kind of keep, and I think with the reporting, we don't have anything to, to worry about. I think that's it for my comments.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into an agreement with Southwest Transit for Prime in the city of Carver.
We have a motion from Councilmember Mock?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Councilmember Henry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Larry.
Speaking of.
I'm sorry, do we have a restart date then? March 1st?
So the agreement calls for March 1st. We'll report back, so Southwest Board will have to approve this, which we don't think will be an issue, but we'll, once we hear back from that, we'll confirm and we'll do, we'll work with Southwest on a, an announcement on social media, website, et cetera, letting people know it's available.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Item 9.4, the Green Ash Drive easement acquisition. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In your packet is a resolution and a settlement agreement. About 19, 20 months ago, the city commenced eminent domain to acquire a 16 and 1/2 by 80-foot wide strip so that the city could extend Green Ash Drive and utilities from the existing subdivision to the new MI Home subdivision. There's, the city got caught a bit crosswise between property owners, there was a contract for deed on that strip. I won't take the council all the way through it because it's painful and numbing details. The city was able to ultimately come to an understanding about two weeks ago. I would like to say it was through my efforts, but I will be very direct and say it was through the very capable efforts of Mr. Merrick, who really brought everybody to the table once I got everybody in a meeting and convinced them to accept an offer that the city had made almost two years ago to resolve this matter. So the $15,000 that the city is settling for is consistent with an offer the city made in March of 2017. I recommend that the council approve the resolution to settle this matter and to authorize Mr. Merrick to sign the settlement agreement. I'm only, sorry it took this long, but the city was really caught in a fight between a contract Vendoor and a contract Vendi and a contract for deed. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
It's just for this, Sidney Rightaway on the street, correct?
Yes.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. Why do I have the long one again? Don't mess it up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 110-19, approving the terms of a settlement agreement to settle an eminent domain proceeding pending in Carver County District Court, Court File Number 10-CV-17-674, and directing City Manager Merrick to execute the settlement agreement.
Done.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock, a second by Councilmember Henry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 9.5, 2019 legislative priorities. Mr. Merrick?
Fair and counsel, the city has annually adopted legislative priorities, so the legislative session has begun. The 2019 legislative prop, or legislative priorities look pretty similar to what you adopted in 2018. I would, I am happy to go into detail in any one of them. The primary pieces though, I think revolve around two probably main planks. One is funding for flood protection infrastructure, really trying to develop a new narrative for where the city is at with flood protection and starting to get into the years of our representatives, Representative Nash and Senator Jensen regarding the city's concept for providing a certified levy. And so this is kind of the entry into that. We are hoping, I think, I think it's our second meeting in February, to have WSB out to talk about where they're at with their concept. And then the second piece is funding for US Highway 212 and finishing up, I believe there's a really small gap now in funding for having a four-lay, four-lane expressway from Carver to Cologne. It's often reported as Chaska to Cologne, but we like to say Carver to Cologne because that's what it is. And so that would be oftentimes, you know, there's a safety piece to that. I mean, there was a fatality at near 43, halfway between 11 and 43 a number of weeks ago. But frankly, there's another piece of this, frankly, economic development and a lot of you have heard this conversation where, you know, Carver, when a business retailer, industrial look at Carver, they look at it as a kind of a trade circle and real, we're real strong on the east side and frankly, the better that Cologne does, the better that Carver is going to do is we can show that we have a complete trade circle and that that's developing. And so the expressway going from Carver to Cologne and Cologne succeeding and developing is going to do wonders for, for Carver along with safety and bringing freight through that corridor. So we really want to keep pushing on that. The other pieces are pretty standard. Last year, there was a real big push, as some of you know, for legislators to look at new bills and legislation that preempted the authority of city councils and county boards where, you know, items would have to be customarily that the council would decide would be preempted by having to go through a reverse referendum process. And the League of Minnesota Cities was a really, a great leader in notifying cities about these pieces. The city council adopted a resolution in support of opposing new legislation that would create preemption amongst local government or take away local government control. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions about specific, specific pieces if I can tack within the legislative priorities for the council.
I think these look good, Brent. I appreciate kind of the ones, you know, that you highlighted. I think they're all good. Well done.
You have a question. Brent, the ones that are on here this year, there's some that are familiar. Do we have, have most of these carried over from year to year?
Correct.
Or have we added anything new this year from the previous year?
The, the one that's new, and Larry Harris is an expert at this, but relates to, so there is a, I even hate saying this because I know Larry gets excited about it, but Harstead versus Woodbury. I'll let Larry get into it because he gave me such a nice compliment that I'll let him talk about case law.
Maybe about three years ago, the city of Woodbury attempted to impose a somewhat vague and undefined and very large fee against a developer, Harstead Development, for off-site transportation improvements, i.e. improvements to city streets that candidly weren't even directly adjacent to the development. The developer commenced litigation against the city, ultimately prevailed, prevailed through the appellate courts and created some really unfavorable case law for cities in terms of how they can impose any type of a fee for an off-site transportation improvement. That's a significant issue for communities and has kind of been a game changer in terms of how cities have to do certain things. A good example in the city of Carver, it's not, and I want to be careful, it's, I don't want to say these are small dollars, but the city in relation to the Oak Tree subdivision anticipates that Oak Tree is going to contribute to needs on Dogron Road. Now, Dogron Road doesn't directly abut Oak Tree. So within your approving resolutions and within what has become a relatively more convoluted developers' agreement, we now have to treat these as special assessments with special assessment waivers in a means to collect a charge. Then in the case of Oak Tree, the developer goes, yeah, we get it, we understand that we create some pressure on Dogron Road and they didn't object to the fee, but it was a pretty complicated means in order to do that and to recover it. But. But for other cases, that could become significantly more complex, particularly for developments that don't directly abut county state aid highways. Because of the county's cost share policy on improvements, county state aid highways, they require the city to pay the development created portion. The county doesn't have direct authority to make the developer pay, so the county's position is the city has to pay. Well, if the city can't impose a transportation fee upon a developer, we get through some pretty interesting machinations about how are we going to do this? That particular issue and how to resolve it is going to get some serious traction at the legislature this year. And candidly, there's going to be some pretty significant push-pull between the LMCIT, Greater Minnesota Cities, and BATSY, the Builders Association of the Twin Cities. I mean, there's going to be, I don't know where that's going to play out, but it's a, it's a really significant issue for developing communities and it's a, it's a big potential issue in Carver. So far, we've been able to do a workaround, but they're complicated and expensive and, you know, I probably worry more about Brent does than about bad fact situations that we might not be able to correct it. So in my universe, this is a big priority for the legislature to address this year.
I have to say, I was at the League of Minnesota Cities Leadership Conference this past weekend, and this was on their priority list, so I did hear about this. And a lot of what we have on this list is very consistent with what the League of Minnesota Cities had on their list. This was, I had already kind of learned about this before the packet. You knew all the case law.
Marbury versus who?
I have a question for you there, Mr. Merrick or Mr. Harris. Is there any areas within our city that could also have the same scenarios, the Dahlgren Road, where this could come up as far as opting out or supporting a transit system? Like, do we have a development that has a similar scenario with this, a county road? At pressure being added, even though the property's not adjacent, but-
Not that I can think of it.
Do we have anything on our radar that we should get in front of?
Typically comes with a, Councilmember Sarah typically comes with a collector road that serves a bunch of other properties and maybe only briefly touches the development property. I mean, the interesting thing is, I understand it is, cities are able to do this as it relates to water and sanitary sewer infrastructure. It's just basically a gap in the statute that doesn't allow it for streets. And so what cities are advocating for is you allow it for certain types of infrastructure. It's obvious to cities that streets should be included in that, and so this is why we're doing it. But to the, to your point specifically, there isn't anything that I'm aware of other than as we go west down Dahlgren Road where the geography of that terrain makes it difficult to connect on to Dahlgren where I think that'll be an ongoing issue as we develop west of 11.
We did have that issue earlier this year, though, with the D.R. Horton subdivision, which required improvements out of, you know, out on the county road. That resolved itself because of a joint agreement between Horton and United Properties to build the start of that collector end. So in that case, we had cooperative developers. We got it all worked out, but when that, when the Horton subdivision first came in, remember, that was, you know, that was back off the county road. And that's the fact pattern that concerns me. In that case, because of cooperative developers and a need, we got it resolved. But if United Properties hadn't been wanting to come into play right away, that could have been an issue.
That was for the Meridian Fields, correct?
Any other comments, questions? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2019 legislative priorities.
Motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, 9.6, commission appointments.
Okay, let's get the next pile out here.
Ms. Sunziden.
Are we going to do this one commission at a time? How do you want to do this?
Yeah, I think we should start in the order that we did the-
I'd suggest you appoint commissioners one by one.
Vic has requested that we make a motion for every-
Commission?
One commission at a time.
One commission at a time.
Or per, per commissioner. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have one question before we get started. Has anybody heard how Mike Fahey is doing?
You know, being that it's a medical condition, I don't know that we should need to speak to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like to make a motion to appoint, oh, I'm going to have a hard time with his last name, Tim G. Gair? Gair? Okay, to the open position for board member on the HPC Commission.
For the open board?
Yep, for the open board member.
I'll second that.
What, so wait. So we have to all in favor of that?
So we're going to not wait until the end. Okay, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Actually, discussion.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I was, sorry.
Yep, I was going to advocate-
Wait, can we do that? Are we in the middle of a vote?
Larry?
He's fine.
Did I catch you, did I catch you in time?
So the council had a motion and a second. They voted. And then there was some discussion that was-
I did not vote.
Oh.
Nor did I, because our discussion and I'll take the motion and then-
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I had a discussion.
I don't know what just happened here.
Mayor Johnson called for the vote. Some voted, some did not.
And those that voted, voted in the affirmative?
Correct.
So there are at least three votes in favor. And there are now councilmembers that didn't vote that wish to discuss the matter? The, the most civil way to handle this under Roberts' rules would be for those that voted in the affirmative to move to reconsider. A motion and a second by those that voted in the affirmative to reconsider. Then you, that motion, if it then passes, brings the prime motion back on the table. People can discuss and then you can move forward.
I make a motion to reconsider. Our motion.
I guess I'll second.
We have a motion to reconsider from Councilmember McKnight and a second from Councilmember Mock.
I just had one question.
Hold it.
Wait, no, no, no. Then we can have discussion.
I have no discussion on this.
Aye.
Okay, now discussion time.
Opposed?
Wait, are we voting? I didn't catch.
You're voting only on the motion to reconsider at this point?
To reconsider.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion to reconsider, vote aye.
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 Opposed? Motion to reconsider passes.
May I have my question?
You may.
Okay. John Willard is currently on the commission, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
And is he a bo, is he-
Board member or a first alternate? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
My notes are that he's a current board member. And I'm looking at-
Hold on, Mark is going to answer. I think he's-
John is a voting member, not an alternate.
He is not an alternate.
Were you saying voting? Okay, thank you.
And then the other term that's up is Kaylee's, but she is applying for a different commission.
There is, in the packet, it looks like maybe a screenshot from the website, and it has the names and then kind of a box in red on where there's going to be movement just by the term dates. I found that helpful because it says what their current position is.
Where did it go?
Exact.
I know, I had it when the word session-
Well, here, you and I can share.
Kaylee's not going for this. She's going for Parks, right?
So the three applicants are on the-
Yep. So my two cents. I mean, I like that existing commissioners get an opportunity to remain upon that commission because they're interested in continuing. That's kind of my just general default. But I was really impressed with Tim, being a new resident with his experience with older homes, his just breadth of experience. I was very impressed with him. So no matter what, I'd like to see him participate in this commission.
Do you have more questions? I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, Laurie.
No.
I am going to restate, I'm to make a motion for Tim Gair. I'm sorry that I don't have your last name right, for open position as board member on the HPC.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Mock and a second from Councilmember Sarah. Any discussion on this one?
No.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Welcome aboard, Tim. Now we have a first alternate position to fill.
And I would like to-
Sorry. Go ahead, you're fine.
I would like to-
Mayor, can you just hold on a second?
Yeah.
We're still on HPC. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Or did we say, okay?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Willard to first alternate on the HPC.
We have a motion from Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
And a second from Councilmember McKnight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to Parks.
Okay, that is a great idea. Right?
So before we vote on this one, I have a question. So Jody is considered a first alternate?
Correct.
Today, but she's also applying, I'm assuming, for a board member seat. So if we were to vote her, appoint her to as a board member, are we also filling her first alternate seat in this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
And I just want to remind everybody that we do have Mackenzie Tompt, who wasn't able to attend but is still interested. She had a work commitment where she was traveling out of town. So making sure that we keep her in consideration. No, we're on, oh, Parks, the blue one.
All right, I had the wrong one up. I had, it was right in my head, but it was just the wrong paper that he saw sitting here.
Vicki, thank you for color coding them. You did a nice job. We are just struggling apparently with them.
So I will make a motion to have Jody Edstrom move up to the full board member position on the Parks Commission.
I will second that.
So a motion by Mayor Johnson, a second by Councilmember Henry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will go ahead and make a motion for-
I have a question.
Yeah? So now we're filling for both alternates.
Okay. Well, I'll make, no, no, that answered.
Got it, that was his question.
I will make a motion to have Kaylee Swanson as our, as our first alternate.
Second that. We have a motion from Councilmember Henry and a second from Councilmember McKnight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we still now have a second alternate to fill.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mackenzie Tompt for the Parks Commission's second alternate.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sarah. I'll second that. And then a council, a second by Mayor Johnson. Any discussion? Discussion? So my question, Mackenzie was currently on the Parks Commission, right?
Yes, my notes show that she's the second alternate with her term expiring March 1st, 2019.
Okay. All right, that was just my question. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to planning.
You know what, we're lucky. This means we had a whole lot of people who applied. That's what this means, so.
You know what, yes.
I am delighted.
Okay, so we are looking at Planning Commission. We have six candidates vying for four slots. Here, too, I want to remember, remind everybody that Dana Hardy has a bug and wasn't able to come for the interviews, but she is still very interested in a position.
So Dana Hardy is a current board member, if I'm reading this correctly?
Dana is-
Yes.
Yes. Both Dana and Jennifer Lane are both current, full board members, yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Dana Hardy to the Planning Commission as a regular board member.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. No, I didn't. No, I was saying all opposed and nay, but okay.
Was, was that a unanimous vote or was there a?
It wasn't unanimous, I'm sorry.
Looking at the next board member opening for Planning Commission, I'd like to appoint Jennifer Lane.
Perfect. We have a motion by Councilmember Sarah.
For which position?
Within the Planning Commission, a voting board member.
I'll second. And a second by Councilmember Mock. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I will make a motion to appoint Cindy Monroe for our first alternate.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilmember Sarah. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I would like to make a motion to have Reed Welch as our second alternate on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
So that's a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember McKnight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right.
We did it.
Welcome aboard, Reed. Thank you for staying.
I would like to say that of all the years I've been on the council, this is the most talented and qualified group of people we've had. And it's, it's fun knowing that the commissions that we're filling, A, have had the activity of, of people wanting to be on them. And that, I mean, for years, we're going to fill this position. We need somebody for this. And we just didn't have any applicants, but now it's fun and it's, it's nice to see the community involved, but that's what I got.
And we appreciate every person who applied because it's never an easy decision. So thank you for everyone who took the time out of their schedule to, to apply and then to want to be part of this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I will echo both of your sentiments. It's just exactly like how it was, I think, a little more than three weeks ago. It is a really good problem to have, to have more qualified and good candidates and eager candidates than you know what to do with or that you have slots for. I'm also really impressed by the folks who, on that evening when we were appointing somebody to council, who we said, it's not going to work for council, we can just have one, please come back. Those folks like Reed, that they did. So I'm really happy that we're able to engage them through the commission. So I'm really happy that we're able to engage them through the commissions tonight, so. All right. Moving on to Councilmember Communications, Councilmember McKnight.
Yeah. My only communication is that I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Newly Elected Officials Leadership Conference, that's a mouthful. I really enjoyed it. My favorite statistic I shared with Brent earlier is that the league represents, you know, 800 and some cities in Minnesota, 70% of them have a population of 4,000 or less. We are in the top 30. That was really impressive to me. It was really nice to, to spend time and meet other people who are from small communities facing all the same things that we are, as well as get a really broad introduction to, you know, what does it mean to be on a city council, importance of communication and finance and a lot of the basics, so it was really good. I really appreciated being able to attend that. That's all I have to share.
If I may, I have...
Sear, yes, sorry.
If I may, I have a few things to share. I am also attending the same type of conference, it's the same agenda, it's just happening later this month. And I have not had any other meetings or liaison activities since our recent council meeting two weeks ago. And I do want to just acknowledge all the work that went into the recent grant for the infrastructure, the grant that came from the Minnesota Deed. Having had a chance to read into it and learn more about it, that's a big deal, 977 million?
Thousand.
Thousand, sorry, sorry.
Almost a million.
I was like, as I was saying, I'm like, why didn't I write that one down? Okay. Can I read? Anyways, my point is, it just really shows that having a city planner and staff is such an asset and the way that they collaborate with others that we work with. So I think that's specifically Erin Smith, and if I understand, Jean Goddard from Springstead. So just huge thank you, just on behalf of the city. That is tremendous to get that sizable 977,000 US dollars grant from Minnesota Deed for that infrastructure project is just an awesome win, so thank you.
Good. I was able to attend the fire department's training last Monday night. I wanted to go and introduce myself, but it was also the night that they did CPR training, so it was cool, the fire department opens that up to spouses and family members. So there were probably about 40, well, there were maybe 30 folks in there, but some spouses and some older children of firefighters, family members who are now trained in CPR that weren't before, so that's really cool. I also, Larry mentioned it earlier, I also want to just thank Brent for your work with that easement of Green Ash Drive. I know that that was a long road, is probably not the path that I intended to get there, but...
It's a short road.
Way short road. But your ability to kind of work those relationships and the work that you put into making that deal come through is really appreciated, so thank you. It's more than mock.
I don't have much council-wise. I do want to say from the Carver Lions side of the world to say thank you to everyone who came down to the Sawy Bottom fundraiser, who donated, who anonymously donated, people who just stopped down. We were able to, I'm sorry, we were able to raise $2,000 per family in need from that fundraiser, so I just want to say thank you to everyone in town and everyone who stopped by.
It was a fun event.
And it was really pretty, it snowed that day, it was the warmest day that week at 10, at 10.
Other than that, I don't have any, any liaison, Planning Commission didn't meet, but next month, that's all I got.
Mr. Merrick?
Councilmember Sear, do you want to talk about Carver County leaders at all?
Yeah, there was a meeting, kind of mid-January, Carver County Leaders, that meets quarterly, and they brought in some speakers that work in the field of drug addiction and really shared some stats for all the counties. So it was interesting to see with Carver County and just what initiatives Carver County has. And it was just how it's, it is a priority or it's, you know, definitely, you know, something that ties into, it was a lot of people from the public health and then also the criminal justice system, but that they really realize that there's so many factors that go into it, and that it's really a community effort to, you know, just support people and to offer services. So I thought it was, it was really insightful. And so then our next meeting is March, April. I don't know what the topic will be, but I'll be able to share on that again.
Thank you. We're good? Vicki, anything? No? Dan? Larry? Back row?
Back row.
No? Okay.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Henry?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He's adjourned.